So, welcome everyone to the April 26, 2021, meeting of the North Coventry Township Board of Supervisors. My name is Jim Marks and I serve as Chairman of the Board. Present with me this evening on this Zoom meeting is Supervisors Rebecca Elliott, Spencer Claypool, Vice Chairman Rick Schiller. Also joining us is our Township Manager Erica Badorf and our Township Solicitor Dan Sager. Sent out in the Board's packet last Friday was the draft of the April 12, 2021 meeting minutes. Do I have any comments or corrections on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 12, 2021?
Seven minutes.
Rebecca makes a motion and Spencer is seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and the minutes are approved. Accounts payable since our latest meeting, we have unpaid bills totaling $49,208 and a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $147,090. Do I have any comments or questions on the bills? Any comments from the public on the bills? The list of bills was posted to the township website for public review over the weekend. If anybody would like to ask a question pertaining to the bills, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask your question now. Hearing none, do I have a motion to authorize the payment of $49,200 and acknowledge the paid bills and payroll to in the amount of $147,090?
So move.
Rick makes a motion to have a second.
Second.
Spencer, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the bills are paid and acknowledged. Developers bills, anybody have anything on the developers bills? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to zoning and subdivision, which we have nothing for this evening. So, we're going to move ahead with all business. The first item pertains to the stove and fuel tank out at Parvis Hall, which were placed on municipal in hopes of selling. There were no bids received on the fuel tank. However, we did receive several bids for the stove with the highest bid coming in at $1,750 from Jim Howser of Anvil, Pennsylvania. So, we're gonna need a motion to award the highest bid for the stove to Jim Howser in the total amount of $1,750. Does anybody have any comments or questions they want to make on this before we vote on the motion?
Well, those funds go into the open space fund. Where will they go?
Due to the fact that the, oh, if there are any, I'm sorry, Jim, if you had a comment, okay. The revenue that's offset since it is from the lodge and we do have quite a project in front of us. I think that would be a good way to go to put that revenue back towards the project. That would just be a recommendation.
But those funds come out of the open space. Am I right about that? The maintenance?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
And the fuel tank did not sell. Are we going to relist that on municipal bid?
I would think not because we have to advertise each time we list it, correct Erica? And it costs $700 to advertise. And we didn't get any bids this time. I don't know if we would get any the next time for a few hundred hours. And we're spending more than that in advertising.
Yeah, the advertising is, I think, because I kept it to a very short advertisement that was required by municipal code was just about $50. But it's still a process for sure, so.
Okay. Okay, so it wouldn't make sense to relist it to lose money.
Right.
So, how do we dispose of the tank?
I'll coordinate with John on that.
Okay. And the sink, that was, the sink was not placed on municipal?
No.
What are we doing with that? Maybe I have a thought on that?
Yeah.
I'll speak on the fuel tanks and also the sink. The sink, or thoughts of possibly reusing, I don't know where we stand with that. Fuel tank, we have to, we have to put a hole in or cut a hole in it, wipe it down and we can take it to the scrapyard.
Alright, so we need a motion to award the highest bid for the stove to Jim Howser for the total amount of $1,750. I mean, see, he's coming to pick that up?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there a date and time or that it has to be removed by?
We have seven days from this evening's meeting and he's very eager to pick it up, so we'll arrange that for him.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to award the highest bid to Jim Howser of Anvil, PA in the total amount of $1,750. Rick, I think made a motion, Spencer seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes and the stove is sold. Good luck getting it out of that building. Okay, new business. Actually, new business is probably really old business. It's an update on the recycling services or RSI as we know it. There are plans this year to reopen the facility in June. The property is owned by the township and was the subject to discussion in recent years due to a DEP violation for storage of hazardous materials in 2019. RSI was in operation as a recycling center since 1971 and was incorporated as a nonprofit foundation in 1989. The operation's been closed for the past few years and new members of the nonprofit board would like to reopen the facility to help serve the public as a, to help individuals recycle more difficult items that are not captured with curbside recycling service. The Chester County Solid Waste Authority has contracted with the township in 2019 to provide consulting services and has worked with RSI to develop strategies to support the new operation. Joining us tonight is Jay Erb, he's a member of the Board of RSI. He's going to give us an update of where the project stands now. Jay?
Jim, I just received a message from Jay that he's having some technical difficulties.
Do you want to bring us, or can you bring us up to date and relay what he was going to say to us?
I do, I have been working with Jay as the county has assisted with consulting services. They contracted with an engineer to help facilitate a survey. Perhaps you saw that always. But the survey results are very interesting. There is a desire for a facility that would be open to not only residents but the local area for hard-to-recycle materials. So, one of the ideas that RSI has is looking at things like electronic recycling in addition to all sorts of other materials, whether it's batteries or light bulbs. Interesting things that way and also look at it from environmental education focus, which I know is something that Jay and the nonprofit board would really like to focus on. So, the reopening would occur in June and it would be taking one step at a time in terms of reopening the facility, certainly because there was quite an operation going for some time. So, that would be, that would be the goal.
And it should, it should be, it should be noted also that they've worked very hard in the past several years to clean up that site. It was, it had really, it was in a really bad way and they went in and cleaned up all of it. It's amazing how clean it is now. They really should be commended for the, for the hard work that was involved in.
Definitely.
Mm-hmm.
Guess we're gonna have to revisit this in the future if you have something to add to it. At this point, there's no motion, there's no action required by the township? It's like, that's correct.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, yeah.
My only, my only question would be as far as the role of the township as property owner.
Right.
What? And maybe this is a legal question. What documents do we need in place for them to operate on township property?
Well, that's, that's a good question. What you need is you need a contract, you need, there needs to be significant insurance that we need to have, we need to have a bond, I would suggest. There's a lot, I think, of detail legally before they can really start at June 1st. I would suspect that there is some of that stuff in place already from the last time it was being used. So, I think we probably couldn't use that as a model and go forward with that. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. I hope that there was at least.
Well, that was 1971, so I wouldn't expect that there's, even if there is or was paperwork, I would suspect that we don't have that anymore. Especially that was pre-AGNIS, right? So, we've lost a lot of paperwork during AGNIS. No doubt that was part of it.
That was.
There's, there's a lot of, there's liability insurance, obviously, because there's people that are coming in and out of the site, obviously. There's also the environmental insurance, make sure that we were covered for that in case there is a problem in the future with whatever being, with batteries, et cetera, that are being stored there. That they do a state of the science at the, in the contract. There's, like I said, there probably needs to be some kind of bond, that's what I would recommend, of something that they have that in case there is issues in the future. These are the things that need to be addressed or at least maybe answered questions with respect to that. I assume it's a non, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I stepped on you there. Go ahead.
Well, I assume it's a nonprofit, we need to know the principles, the principals need to have the insurance as well, all that kind of things that we're talking about. So, to me, there's a lot of legal issues to go for, but it is doable if they, if they have it.
Okay, so I would assume the appropriate course of action would be for the RSI Board to reach out to Erica and then Erica communicate with you as far as what's required for them to be clear to open.
Correct.
Hopefully, at some point in June, so Jay, I hope you take that away and back to the Board and just have somebody reach out, I don't know who your spokesperson is, but have somebody reach out to Erica and coordinate to get news, that paperwork complete and filed so the recycling center can reopen.
That, that would be fine. We can definitely do that.
You said fantastic. And any other board members have any comments or questions on this?
No, nothing for me.
No.
No.
Does, is there any public comment on this subject?
Chris Washburn, has anybody done a financial projection for the financial health of RSI in the future? The old RSI used to get a, seem to survive on some donations.
No, I think that would be a question for their Board or a member of their Board since Jay is incommunicado here, when I can be able to answer that question.
Okay. But that is a good question, Chris. I think you're right. They, they need to show that they're solvent. It's part of what we're talking about.
Administration, my initiation report, Erica?
Alright, thank you. The primary election is coming up, that is May 18th. The North Coventry Township Voting Precinct for West Two has been moved from Shankill Church. It was at North Coventry Elementary. It is going to be moved again to Owen J. Roberts Middle School. So, please make note of that 881 Ridge Road in terms of upcoming voting and that's due to COVID guidelines. The 2021 Road Program bids have been advertised for the project on Temple Road. That is planned to be received May 19th and we'll be listing that for consideration once you review those bids, May 24th, 2021. The Township Authority, or the Municipal Authority, rather, has submitted the Laurel Wood Road Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project Plan Documents and Road Occupancy Opening Permit. We have submitted that to LTL Consulting and they will be reviewing that. That's the work being done to replace the water and sewer mains along Laurel Wood from Greenbrier Road to River Road. So, we'll continue with that process. A few significant building permits that the township has received. The Giant Food Store at Suburbia has submitted plans for a partial interior renovation and they are looking at adding new decor, signage, fitting out and expanding their peat pot operation as well as adding the beer garden that they had planned, I think, about a year or two ago. And they will be moving forward that project here within the next few months and selling beer and wine as well. In addition, plans were submitted for the interior renovation to fit out of currently vacant space at 501 Skookel Road, right next to, right next to Representative Tim Hennessy's office and Pacola Mondo, just give a little scale of that and that'll be PMSI, a new medical facility there. And then as far as a financial review, since we're complete with the quarter of 2021, we reviewed our reports from March 31st, 2021. The township has collected $1,401,804. That's on track at 28% of our budget figures and total expenses incurred are $1,113,000 and that's representing 23% of our total budget for expenditures. So, that's a net income of $288,000. It's because of tax receipts, we're starting to see that start to change and recognize that revenue, so that is good. In addition, today I spent some time with Tricia McCloskey, who is replacing Michael Lane for the park coordinator position. So, we had some time to meet, talk about North Coventry projects and we also had a chance to go to Fernbrook. She spent a lot of time looking at North Coventry Parks today and is spending a great deal of time with all the different townships she's going to be responsible for. So, so that went well. Good to have her and work through that transition. And in addition, I just want to mention as well, next week on May 5th, we will have a planning commission workshop and that'll be at 7:00 PM. Alright, thank you very much.
Dan, let's do solicitor report.
Okay, I have a couple of things. At the Board's request, I did follow up with Lowe's. I did speak with the owner of the Coventry Town Square and Shopping Center on Friday and the owner stated that they've been aggressively attempting to speak with Lowe's as well. They understood the problem and their concern that obviously they have a liability as well if ultimately it's not cleaned up. I understand from Erica and Mike that it is being cleaned up at this point. There's a hearing scheduled currently, I believe, for, I think it's May 28th, Erica, something of that nature.
Yes.
As well, they did file their appeal. But at this point, that's where we are, they are cleaning it up and I guess that as it gets closer and we'll discuss as to how you want to deal with the prosecution, so to speak, in May. So, that's.
They have made great strides. I was down there over the weekend and they have done a lot to clean it up, so we'll revisit as we get closer.
I will say, I don't think that the owner was aware of what was going on and the issues with Lowe's and Lowe's was ridiculous, I will say. And I'll put, I mean, their contact information that you literally have to call their main number and you don't get anybody was not a good public relations there with the township. But the owners, I will say, did step up immediately. He called me back immediately, he asked what can I do. He's on, literally on the computer typing away to Lowe's, so you gotta deal with this. So, I do give credit to the Town Square for that. With respect to the, as also per the Board, I did follow up with getting a little bit more information with respect to the DN, DCNR grant for the Coventry Meadows Open Space. My, from my discussions with the representative there, if the hay is ultimate, is not directly sold to a third party but is used for an animal or something or that nature indirectly, that is ultimately sold for milk or whatever, that's, as long as it's not a direct sale of the hay and it's an indirect use of the hay, you're okay. So, my understanding from what Cole was using it for, it was probably acceptable with respect to, even if he's selling a milk or he's selling something that relates to indirectly to the hay. So, probably the township was okay with that. But again, you can't sell it, the township can't theoretically sell it either unless you're putting it back into the Meadow. And they have, if you are interested, there is actually a ratio. You don't have to put 100% in, by the way, either. There is a whole formula that they use. So, that's where you are with that. And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, in regards to that, at this point at our, at our last meeting, we agreed that the farmer can continue his operation there through the end of this year. He can't apply any, anything to the fields through this year, any additional. And, and we'll revisit this either at the end of the year or beginning of next year and it's, we put it upon, incumbent upon the REAC and maybe working with Parks and Rec to come up with a plan for that field on how we can manage it, pay for it, maintain it. So, near the end of this year, early next year, we'll revisit it. Hopefully, we'll have a plan from them, we'll have a proceed and then it'll come to the Board for, for further discussion. We'll move on to Supervisors' report. Rebecca, do you have anything?
No, I don't, not today. There's a lot of pollen in the air. Notice that. But nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, Rick?
Yes, I would like to give thanks to the Parks and Rec. My grandchildren made it down to Riverbend Park, the new playground. They gave it two thumbs up and since that was all one of my action items from years ago, I do appreciate the effort put forth and all, so good job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Anything else? Spencer?
Yes, I just have one thing. Every year, the Natural Lands Trust publishes a small magazine twice a year and the full winter catalog this year featured an article on the Great Oak on St. Peters Road and it was under a article on conservation and I thought it was very well written and also a very good explanation on how conservation works. And there were a couple pictures of the Great Oaks Farm there and how the plan was laid out to bring it under easement and a couple pictures of the Great Oak. So, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Spencer.
Yeah.
Okay, for myself, I was going to bring up the Lowe's, but Dan covered the Lowe's portion. Just want to, want to share just one thing, I had a quick question on this, I thought I might as well share it. I'm assuming that everybody knows where RSI is, so I just wanted to show the map. It's actually located off South Hanover Street and River Road and I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's right here and left-hand side, center left of the, of the screen, right off of Elm Street. So, that's the location of RSI. And I saw Jay had jumped off and came back on. Jay, can you, can you speak now or?
Can you hear me this time?
We got you.
Okay, so, sorry about the technical difficulties.
No problem. So, is there, is there comments you want to make pertaining to RSI? Maybe is there something, you know, Chris had a question about answers, is that something you can answer?
Well, I mean, your summary of, you know, there was virtually two years put into the cleanup and the cleanup is now complete and owe the support with the Solid Waste Authority and the Township, we can restore the services again. As far as the financials, one of the things that I think, and this, there's actually a board meeting at 8 o'clock tonight, so there's obviously things to be determined yet. But there was full-time employees before, which I don't believe there will be now, which will make quite a difference in the financial needs when you look at that difference in salary. I would hope that, you know, since it has been making it all these years and we make that substantial change in salary, that it should still be financially viable. I'd actually like to talk to Chris about that because I'm sure he would have some wisdom to impart as we, we do move forward and meet with the Board.
It may be helpful to give a business plan, a structure, show, whether it's Chris and, and I think the Board and Erica as well, probably need something to show on paper, what, what the structure is, a business plan, what your expenses, income you perceive in the future. I think that would be helpful. Then there's the insurance as well, Jay, I think we have to get into that as well a little bit.
Yeah, the, the insurance policy has been maintained even during the shutdown. So, there's a general liability policy that has been maintained.
Who paid for that?
Donations. Even during the two years that the facility was closed, there was financial support with people making donations to support the cleanup and reopening.
That, that's great because that is going to have to continue. But, you know, the secret of this is, particularly as you're about ready to open, is developing a strategic plan, which requires marketing for donations and, and how you collect the fees and all that kind of stuff.
That's one of the topics on the Board meeting for this evening is fee structure. But, yeah, I'd be glad to talk to you about that, Chris, if you have suggestions.
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. And Jay, while you're on the hot seat here, let's, why don't we touch base since this is a pretty quick meeting tonight? Why don't we touch base with our Boards and Commissions? Jay, we'll start with you on Parks and Rec. Any updates you can give us on what's, what's going on with Parks and Rec?
There was a meeting this afternoon, Michael Lane, the Regional Recreation Coordinators, was retiring and Tricia McCloskey is his replacement. She started last week and met today with North Coventry. Eric and I sat down with her and we then toured Fernbrook. She toured the other park sites with Michael solo. So, she'll be coming online next week, hopefully in May or June, like to have her meet with the rest of the Commission. Eric had some very positive news about the boat dock grant moving forward and some updates on the Skookel River Trail Engineering. About 70% complete, so some of our larger projects. John's getting ready for the paving in front of the Fernbrook Lodge, which will be a very positive step to prevent further erosion in that stone driveway and continue the restorations of that site. I believe that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Those who don't know, Jay is the Chair, Chairman of our Parks and Rec Commission. We'll move on to Bill Sumis, Chairman of our Planning Commission. Bill, I want to give a recap of last Wednesday's meeting, I think it was a really informative session.
Thanks, thanks Jim, we did uh, during our April meeting, have Chris Patriarca, who's a senior planner with the Chester County Planning Commission. Give us a tutorial on zoning overlays. And uh, he talked about the different types of zoning overlays, when to use them, how to use them. And what steps need to be taken to use them. It was kind of interesting because the uh, township currently has uh, eleven different types of overlays already being used within the uh, North Coventry Township. So I did not know that and uh, it 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 was a very informative uh, presentation. And uh, I I think we all learned quite a bit from him taking the time to do that. I also want to mention that the uh, the May fifth planning workshop, Eric has been uh, instrumental in lighting up two guest speakers to talk about the uh, there's interest in restoring uh, passenger rail service between Reading and Philadelphia and how that gets done. And she's got two people uh, that are taking the time to present to the planning commission. So if anyone's uh, on the phone would like to join the, the uh, workshop, it may be quite informative. Uh, uh, in in the approach that they're looking to take to to help reinstate rail service. That's all I've got, Jim, thanks.
Okay, um, thank you, Bill. Bill also serves as chairman of the Pottstown Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission. So um, thank you for for representing township there, Bill. And uh, EAC, I'm hoping John Worth is on here, I see John and Patty labeled, John, are you here?
Yep, actually, Jim, both of us are here.
Great.
Um, I give you the update on EAC issues, um, couple of things that are kind of top of the list as far as what we're working on. Uh, one, obviously, we are working, continuing to work on the uh, list of recommended plants, uh, addressing some of the really, uh, I think constructive comments that we got from the planning commission to make the list of recommended plants. Uh, I think more user friendly for our residents as well as for any developers. Uh, the, the other big news is the uh, the Trex plastic recycling program. We of course have those recycling bins out in front of the uh, township building. And we are getting a tremendous response from our residents. Um, in fact, we have to empty them three times a week. Um, and we will get to our goal of five hundred pounds collected um, within about two and a half months. So much quicker than the six months, um, that that we, we have to collect five hundred pounds within six months to earn a free bench. We're going to collect five hundred pounds in about two and a half months.
Very good.
And that's all for me, AC.
Very good, John Sers is our chairperson of the um, of our environmental advisory council, so thank you. Edie, Edie is our uh, newest chairman, chairperson, I should say, of our open space reward. And you have a meeting tomorrow night, Edie, correct?
Tomorrow night, we have a meeting tomorrow night, um, and I would like to follow up on Spencer's uh, reference to the Great Oak. Um, there was also in, um, the Chester County has um, published a list of those projects that move the landscapes three planning forward. And that was, the Great Oak was one of those projects. I'm, I'm more about the county, um, Rachel Griffiths um, laid out the fact that their county is creating an open space toolkit. Um, and they will be, they're this pushing on major initiatives in open space. Um, dealing with, their goal is to meet with communities directly. Um, to um, evaluate, to find out what the issues are with open space. So I'm really looking forward to um, working more with her. Um, and she's very specific about target municipalities and dealing with landowner questions. Um, and finally, um, again, from the county's perspective, the, they have an open space um, uh, uh, webinar going on, on Thursday evening. Um, this is um, following up on the um, other webinar that they had on um, dealing with uh, climate change. Um, and one of our members, um, Phyllis uh, is interested in and has been in touch with um, I believe John Worth about, and the EAC about creating a subcommittee that would uh, uh, follow through on the action steps that the county is, uh, has laid out to deal with climate change. So we will be talking about that tomorrow evening.
Thank you, Edie. And last but not least, Spencer, chairman of our historical commission, I think you want to share about the historical commission?
Um, yes, uh, so the Great Oak has been mentioned. And I want to read you one line here from this publication. The Great Oak was alive when European settlers arrived. And is one of fewer than one hundred of these historic trees remaining in the Commonwealth. It is this stately tree that gives Great Oak Farm its name. And uh, yeah, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Spencer. Um, Chief, do you have anything for, for the public tonight?
Uh, no, nothing, uh, nothing new to report. Um, still uh, working uh, to to maybe set up the, the one uh, community event down there, the ice cream parlor in June, if all goes well. Uh, but uh, this plan is just moving forward.
Thank you, Chief, and and John, wouldn't be complete without hearing from our roads department and our roadmaster, how does everything going?
Well, while we finished uh, the sweeping of the curb roads, I believe about two weeks ago, so that that's complete, that hasn't been done in a few years. And uh, busy with grass, potholes and and roadwork, so.
Very good, thank you. Public comment, this is a portion of a meeting where the public gets to comment. Uh, if you have something you'd like to share, it is that you unmute, um, state your name and make your comment. I do have one hand raiser, um, I believe it's Dan Doyle, um, Dan, we'll start with you.
Thanks, Jim, good evening, uh, this is a question for Erica and maybe John also, has to do with the Laurel Wood Road Project for the Water and Sewer Main Replacement. Um, I'm glad to see this finally coming from the municipal, from the municipal group. Uh, Erica, do they give any idea when this project might even start, just an estimate?
Um, there is a timeline, uh, due to the fact that I know the portion of the uh, funds used are grant funds. Uh, so I know that there is interest in having this probably late spring, early summer to get out to bid. Um, and start this project this year, so they they definitely want to have the project fully uh, implemented this year.
Any idea how long the project will take once it's started?
Uh, I would say at least three months.
How many months, please?
Three, I would say at least three.
Okay.
For the project duration, could be at least uh, six with contract requirements, that kind of thing with inspections, but.
Okay, uh, now it goes down uh, from River Road to Greenbrier. Uh, and I'm in previous talks with John, that's when the road will get re paved, the whole road, because they'll dig it up and they'll have to repave it. Uh, what about the section from Greenbrier down to seven twenty four, that's in bad shape too, will the town do that? Okay, in uh, conjunction with the replacement of the road?
Uh, would you like me to speak?
Yes, please, John.
Our, our hope was to coordinate our, our paving project uh, on one of their sewer water project, that wasn't able to happen. Uh, so right now, they're gonna, they'll have a two-year bond, maintenance bond on their road, on their work as far as settlement in the road. Uh, defects, things like that, so we're taking the position now, we want to wait till that two-year maintenance bond period is over. Uh, before we address Laurel Wood Road.
Okay, thanks, John, thanks, Erica, that's it for me, Jim, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, any other public comment?
Yeah, hi, Jim, this is Rick Gosbald, I had a question.
Um, sure.
And I, I'm not sure, please, who, who to, who to address it to. But um, I'm a, a longtime resident of North Coventry, sixteen years here in the Grandview Circle area. Um, my question is around the client apartments and the Tripodi lawsuit. Um, and just, I know that came up in the last meeting and I was just kind of curious, and maybe it's a Dan Sager question or Erica. Um, you know, what the status of that is and if i- if the township actually does follow through, is there an intent to have like a bidding process to buy and refurbish those? Or or what's the kind of thought around that? I know it's a long time sore spot in the, in the townships, no, I can go off mute.
Sure. So, um, Dan. Sure, I, I can speak to that. Um, last summer, uh, Judge Mann did order that Ms., the Mrs. Tripodis were to uh, uh, were found in contempt, uh, violating hi- his order and did order that the properties be placed for sale. There was a time period that bidding was to be made, it was to be made for a public bid. Uh, and for less, for no less than a million dollars. Um, it was, there was a special master that was appointed, his name is Jack Corey Esquire, and bids were to be submitted to him. Which my understanding is there were, there were multiple bids. Um, what happened is in the meantime, they filed an appeal, uh, which in essence stayed the pro, the, the actual sale until the Commonwealth Court, which ultimately did make a decision, uh, and now it's before the Supreme Court. Um, we did make application to request that the stay be removed. We are waiting for the appellate court to make that decision. And hopefully if we're, um, assuming we will be successful, if we are successful, the uh, property will be sold uh, to the highest bidder. I would imagine uh, thereafter pretty fast.
Will there be a um, a, a re-upping of the bidding process since it's somewhat dated at this time?
Um, that's a good question, but you would, you would need to speak with Mr. Corey directly with that. He's the one who ultimately takes the bids, he's the one, Judge Mann actually approves the bids. So if there's other interest or there's something else out there, um, that would be something you would have to talk to, to Mr. Corey about. We can, we don't control that, we're not part of that.
Okay, uh, where would I get that contact information?
Uh, I think it's three two three twenty eight hundred is his uh, number. Uh, but if you look at Donald Weissman, take Google it, that's his uh, main number, his office number, six one zero three two three twenty eight hundred, I think is his number.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, any other public comment? Hearing none. That concludes the meeting for this evening, twenty-five people joined us tonight, really appreciate everybody joining us on such a short agenda. Uh, really appreciate all of our boards and commission members who joined us here tonight and those brought us up to date on what they're working on. Uh, our next meeting, I believe is May tenth, um, seven o'clock, the uh, the link will be posted on Facebook and the website the day of, or day before the meeting. Um, hope to see everybody then. Uh, so at this time, without objection, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and say goodnight.
Goodnight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodnight.
Enjoy the nice weather and don't sneeze too much.
Bye-bye.